Thank you to everyone in the room and all of our fans out there watching us on TV. To follow many of the presentations you've seen already, and please let me know if you can't hear me with my mask on. We're going to only spend a very short amount of time looking back over the last year. As many people know, the last year was, as everyone should know, the last year was really dominated by COVID. So we'll just spend a really short amount of time going over some of those things. And monthly at the council meetings, we've been bringing updates on our larger projects. So we can always go over those again later if you're interested. So very quickly in 2020, just in our department, for the public information and outreach portion of our job, we do annual campaigns that include hurricane and flooding information. We do bike and pedestrian safety. We hit recycling, especially over the past few years since recycling has changed so much in America due to China and other countries no longer purchasing contaminated items for recycling. We also work on ocean safety and beach rules. A lot of those items I just mentioned, we do have collateral materials that are provided by some of these agencies and some of them we create ourselves. Jumping to COVID-19, which is now becoming an annual campaign that we do. I first wanted to start it with our business outreach. This happened very early on in the spring. And thank you to the DCBA for helping to fund this and get it off the ground. We began reaching out to all of our businesses. Initially, we noticed that just really a lot of things, a lot of items that people needed to get going were not necessarily available in stores or they were having trouble purchasing them. In particular, their hand sanitizer and disposable masks. So we worked with the DUC community and business alliance for funding and purchased a number of disposable masks that were distributed to every store in town that was willing to take one. And when we had extras, stores that needed them, we would go around and distribute those. We also worked to help keep the signage about the wear, wait, wash and all of those items. We worked to keep that consistent throughout DUC. And so we offered signage printed on thick paper and laminated. We even offered the businesses the chance to have their own logo placed on it for use in their stores. And so we spent quite a bit of time providing all that information and taking it directly to the businesses just to help them stay on top of things. Some of the mandates that came out and the executive orders that came out did include things that were required to be posted in the stores or pools or any of the areas that were applicable. So we made sure that we could be a resource for any of those people to get the information they needed. We also started reaching out to a business email list. In the beginning, it was mostly about how quickly the executive orders were changing and any new information that had come out and trying to meet with business owners, whether it be about fire capacity or, you know, things like that, to try and, to really try and help them adapt to those changes very quickly so that they can continue to be successful in their business. And we still continue to include information about changing regulations, although they're changing much more slowly now. So on occasion, I switch more to sending out things for small businesses that they can use, like grants, the CARES Act and other local learning sessions for small businesses during the time of COVID. We also began live streaming meetings in a very bumpy fashion last April. The bumps have gotten smaller, but they are still there. And then we did the JIC, the Joint Information Command, that all of the PIOs in the county are on with the County Emergency Management Director. That was stood up early in the COVID season and eventually was put on pause as the Dare County Health Department began to take over the messaging. So the PIOs have continued, even though we aren't formally activated as a JIC right now, we have continued to have meetings pretty much every other week where we discuss a variety of things, often COVID, but other messaging that needs to be out in the community right now. Another thing that we worked on, and Joe did mention this a bit, the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Ambassador Program. Betsy was instrumental here organizing volunteers that were safety ambassadors, staff assisted as well. And they collected usage data and engaged with public in June and July. So different times during the day, different days of the week were chosen to try and interact with larger volumes of cyclists and pedestrians. And this was paired with an online survey that asked people items about their frequency of using the town for walking or biking, how they felt about markings and signs, what their safety opinions were and how they used the crosswalks. We did have a surprising 717 responses to that survey, which is really exciting. And I don't have any charts for you today or numbers right now because we haven't fully analyzed these data. The intention, as Joe mentioned, is to look at these data a little bit later as part of the Phase Four pedestrian plan. And we're certainly happy to offer more surveys as needed just to, as we finalize markings throughout town and things like that, just to make sure we're meeting people's needs as we move through with that final phase of the pedestrian plan. I just wanted to shout out marketing a little bit because I am going to talk about our advertising budget in the next section. So we do have a marketing slash advertising line item budget in my account under Parks. And so I did want to note that the amount of money that we spent this year was really, was reduced quite a bit and there's various reasons for that. The first reason is that print advertisers reduced the number of magazines they were putting out. So most of our frequent local advertisers that we would normally have some sort of advertisement in just completely canceled their spring issues. It was, it was too much for everybody. Nobody knew what was happening. So they canceled those and, you know, so we didn't have to pay for a spring issue. In some cases, when given the option, we also canceled our winter issue because things had gotten a little more hectic with COVID again. So we had no live events, so we reduced some advertising there too. Most of the advertising we did this year, I know that's very small for you guys to read, but I just wanted to show you that we focused on DUC as a destination because we weren't mentioning really specific events we were doing because we, no one knew if or when we could offer any events in 2020. So that little type there that I blew up a little bit, it includes a map that will update for next year for use in other things. That shows crosswalks and shopping centers and the boardwalk and the town park. You know, the things that people can do in town. And we just had a little note that typically we share our free family summer events and we really love that and the community that that brings to DUC. 2020 has been a little crazy, but the spirit of DUC is still alive. So please come to DUC, check our website, check our social media, find out what there is to do in DUC. So obviously we were sending some traffic to our website there rather than, you know, putting out anything static because it was changing far too quickly for that. So I'm going to tag out just for a moment because Betsy's going to do a short overview of the 2020 events that did occur and, excuse me, and how they occurred.
Good morning, everyone. It's been a while. It's good to see you all. So I have to give credit where credit's due. The 2020, a year where a good crystal ball would have made you millions, I stole from a different conference I attended virtually a couple of weeks ago, from Shara Jablansky from the city of Morganton. She's to get credit for that one. So I guess we'll start out with a little bit of a joke, but I'm not going to do the jokes that, you know, planners do. What do you suppose, yeah. What do you suppose the most said three words in the English language for the last year? Wear, wait and wash. How many times did you, I don't know how many times you said it. Christian said it more than I did, but I said it quite a bit. I don't know. So we're going to do a quick overview of 2020 and the virtual events that we were able to put on. We, the fitness was able to go on virtually. We had 13 weeks of them because both Village Yoga and Outer Banks Fitness Collective had the ability to do them from their studio. So what we did was we had them do the video at 7:30 in the morning and they did it live, Facebook Live. We kept the video up for 48 hours to let people see it later and, which really I think probably brought more people in because if you're on vacation, do you really want to get up at seven o'clock to go outside in the heat and do stuff? So we did have, a handful of people said, we've not tried this, we really enjoyed it. The sponsors were very happy. We have spoken with both Village Realty and Zen and Zip since then, and I'll get to that when I start talking about sponsors later as well. They were happy with, with the return Zen and Zip. Marty there said she did have people come in and say, hey, we heard about you on, on the Facebook. And she came in and she was really excited about that. This one quote here, "Thank you. This weekly exercise reminds me of my annual vacation every week." Thank you from Brian Nelson. He commented a lot on the dynamic flow and I hope Dan got some extra business because of that. It was really nice to be able to still promote those local businesses. The one thing we were not able to gauge is how many people were actually watching the whole thing. Facebook will give you stats on how many people watched it live at a peak time, but that means they clicked on it and then could have gotten back out. They'll give you a one-minute view, but they don't give you the how many people were watching at one time, unfortunately. Other online engagement we did was wildlife. And I'm going to give a shout out to Jackie Orsillak for this, who provided us with, A, many of the pictures. As you all know, she's a very big wildlife photographer. And she had an app that made some of them talk. So the information we had on it, she would record on the app and it was, it was really fun. You can go back and look at them. I should have had that fox talk. That fox was over in the amphitheater not too long ago, I believe. We had three virtual concerts and the reason, honestly, the reason we did the concerts was because we had already made a deposit to those bands and they agreed to just take that as their, their fee instead of carrying it over to the coming year, not knowing what was happening. The first one went really well. It was very well received. Jero Williams is his name and I can hardly wait to get him here because he is fantastic. But he has a really big following up in Alexandria, Virginia, and I think a lot of the people watching were his, his people up there. We had a couple of technical issues with the second one. Facebook just wouldn't let me post it on there and so we only had to go to YouTube. It was just little technical difficulties as, you know, seems to be the way of the world these days. And Troy Brezlo at the end was the only one that was truly live. He did the live one, the other two pre-recorded it so that they could have their whole band there doing the socially distanced thing. We did some history and trivia, did a chalk art contest and the three concerts. So, I mean, Donna loves her graphs, so I'm going to go ahead and put a couple of graphs up here. This was, again, we already gave you monthly what the average views were and all this stuff, monthly updates in the summer. So this is just the overall average engagements and reach, reaches through the social media of those events. But the one interesting thing there, Instagram, when you look at the stats, on average, we had 16 new profile followers for each event. I mean, there was some, you know, 33, some two, whatever, but on average, it was about 16 new people for every time we posted something on Instagram. So I thought that was kind of cool. And with that, we will take any questions on 2020 before we head into this next fun year.
I did have a comment I forgot to add about the public information and outreach in 2020. It slipped off the end of my notes. I did want to point out that our communications via e-news, website updates and social media posts nearly doubled March through August of last year. So that's our communications across pretty much every platform that we do. So that's just really number of communications sent out. When you look at communications that came back to us in March and April in particular, a significant portion of my time was spent working with non-resident property owners that were commenting on Dare County's priority access. I'd say, or two or three days a week where that's all I did was call people back who were upset about that. But then as the spring and summer progressed, communications about virtual meetings, events and changing restrictions still kept us very busy, but we've seen a decline, really August. On some of that's less events, but some of that is just, you know, not having three times daily updates about public health measures. So just wanted to throw that in. Any questions?
No, but it was a very challenging year for the two of you and we certainly appreciate your creativity, your innovation and supporting us in very difficult times. It was a summer like no other summer.
Well, thank you for your support because we could not have done this without you. So that brings us to our plans for the public information and outreach portion of our department. And in case I didn't explain at the beginning, for those watching at home, our department is public information, marketing and events. So you'll see a tiny bit of talk in here about marketing and advertising, but mostly it's going to be public information and events. So in 2021, we'll continue our typical annual campaigns. Again, like I said, a lot of these provide material already for us to use. So there's a, you know, National Hurricane Preparation Week, things like that. And so we, we do make use of those materials to, you know, to, so that we are on the same page with other municipalities and these, you know, like the National Weather Service that are providing really good information. The use of, of these collateral materials and us participating in these specific weeks also help our CRS credits. So we do keep track of all of that as public information and that gets fed to Sandy for her CRS updates. Ocean safety, again, we have a great rip current warning program through the National Weather Service. We have a great local alert system called Outer Banks Beach Conditions that anyone can sign up for and people can get updates, for instance, when there are red flag days and they can get updates about more specific events. You know, if a large rip current forms at a certain place in DUC, I can send that out to everyone who's in DUC. Beach rules. So beach rules are signs that we have on, on all of our beach accesses and there's, you know, a short list of rules to make the beach safe and fun for everyone. We don't post all of those every week, but we do work with surf rescue and law enforcement and other people on the beach who might see issues. Like this week, it might be that everyone left their tents on the beach. Next week, it might be that everyone dug really big holes and everyone fell into them, you know. So we try and be reactive throughout the week to help educate the public based on what's coming in. Bike and pedestrian safety, it just, it's a very faraway picture, but I had to throw up the famous Joe Knight, who did star earlier this year in some very quick videos we did about pedestrian and cycling safety. These were trial videos that I took with my iPhone and shortened down to less than a minute so we could use them on social media and they were incredibly popular. And Joe Knight has so many fans now that watch him on YouTube. But this, this spring and getting into the summer with a fully staffed police department and things like that, I, I hope to reach back out to and do a few more of those. You know, they're a little more rough around the edges, but they're very real. People are very interested in things like Facebook Live now. So those, I feel like those videos have a great place for our outreach and education. Another thing that we continue to work on is recycling. And for us, it's about reducing contamination, not necessarily getting people to recycle. We have every week, new people who come into town, they come from all different places in the country where all of the recycling rules are different. And that is what causes contamination in our, mostly our residential containers, but we do have some contamination in our commercial containers as well. So we have, we've reached out to businesses the past couple of years. We've done a program for them and I've offered to go visit different businesses to go over items with their employees and provide them materials they can put up. But we'd really like to look into adding a really heavy-duty sticker to the top of the residential recycling cans just to help people who are only here once a week, you know, make better choices. So we work with the state. These are some items they've made. We think this would be a nice one to go on there since we're trying to reduce contamination, the know your nose, just to remind people of particularly things that we see here on the Outer Banks. So beach furniture is listed in there, diapers are listed in there, receipts are listed in there. All really common things we might see in this area. So right now, I'm working on some potential grant funding to offset any cost to the town for working on those stickers. And then continued collaboration, the PIO group, the lead PIOs from every municipality and the county. We also include Park Service with that. We have, are dedicated to meeting. We're going to try and continue to meet twice a month for as long as it's useful to us and quite frankly, it's useful every time. In addition to that, Betsy and I recently planned an event coordinator meeting and that was held February 1st. And we met, whoops, sorry. We, we met with event planners from mostly municipalities. So we didn't, we weren't ready to bring in all of the private companies yet because we really wanted to get on the same page with our municipal and county partners. But we did have the Dare County Tourism Board there and the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce, who does the seafood festival. And Sheila Davies was so kind to jump into that meeting as well, kind of like she did for us. And so you heard a lot of her updates. I'll touch on them a little more later. But, you know, we went over with all of, all of the municipalities in the county about what we felt like made sense this year, would be safe this year and continuing to work with Sheila about what she would support throughout the county. Now, the governor is due to either update or extend the current executive order at the end of this month. So we will be planning a meeting in early March to see about any changes and if that affects any of the ways that we feel about event planning. We'll have some more slides about event planning during COVID coming up. And then More Beach to Love, I just wanted to mention that. We've had some talk about beach nourishment already, but the More Beach to Love website that's owned by the county has been updated, but with very general information. So the Northern Beaches Together, we created a statement just that, you know, this will be happening in the summer of 2022. You can contact each town for information and, and pretty much left it at that. Nag Ted, Buxton and Avon, if Avon passes, will also have information up there. Now, as we move throughout the process, so probably much later this year when we, when we have a lot more information about bids and about timelines and early into next year, everyone will contribute to the More Beach to Love website and there most likely is going to be advertising dollars in the beach nourishment fund coming through the county that we can use to really get that message really plastered out there. And then we will reactivate our pages on our website that will discuss very localized impacts and schedule of beach nourishment in DUC. I did want to dive into this just a little bit, particularly for people watching at home. One of the big thing that's happened this spring is that the county switched their alert software. So we used to use a software named Regroup, which I think everyone is familiar with. It could be used at the county level where the emergency manager could override everyone and send an alert out to the whole group. And then at the municipal level, we had various features as well. So we could, if someone had signed up for our DUC list, we could contact everyone there. We could geo-fence, you know, draw on a map and say, oh, there's been a water main break. We want to tell these four neighborhoods. If they're signed up, they can get it. And we also fed into the Outer Banks Beach Conditions text to join. So the Rave software switch, they changed for numerous reasons. A, it costs less, it has more features than the Regroup system does. This is software that is used a lot at universities and things like that to alert students. So at the end of this month, the Regroup system will be completely shut down and Rave is already active, but will be the only system. They're referring to it as OBX Alerts. And I checked these numbers just a couple of days ago. So since we've been advertising the switch to Rave, these are the lists that I have available currently right now that people can sign up for in DUC. So DUC emergency, that can be general emergencies, that can be things like highway 12 is flooded, don't drive through there, you know, things that are much more urgent. We have a trash and recycling list for delays in trash and recycling. We have an events list that I'm not totally sure how we're going to use it yet, but we wanted to make sure it was in there. There's a lot of ways to use it if people sign up for it, knowing what they're going to get. So most likely it would be used to update people about weekly events and also to let them know about last-minute cancellations or changes. We have an oceanfront and a soundfront homeowners list. These both are also meant for items that would be of particular interest to an oceanfront homeowner or a soundfront homeowner. And then Outer Banks Beach Conditions in parentheses, because that is not just a DUC-specific one. All of the municipalities and the county have access to that. So the numbers you see there are the number of individuals that have already signed up for those lists. You may notice that the numbers seem very high, particularly for oceanfront and soundfront homeowners. In Rave, the responsibility for keeping up to date your profile and for joining any list is completely on the user. I can't go in and see who is on any of those lists. I can only get a number. What we think has happened is that as people switched over to this new one, they did not uncheck every box because it comes, comes pre-checked and then you have to uncheck boxes. So we'll see how these numbers kind of play out once people start getting messages. And there's going to be some additional educational material that comes out from the county, which will then be amplified by the municipalities. Again, for those watching at home, I don't expect you to read any of this, but these are just two screenshots of how you sign up for OBX Alerts. And I just, I wanted to point out two features that come with the program. So the left screen is really just your general signup screen. You put your name and your email address and all of those types of things. But in that red circle, it says receiving assistance. And there's a box you can check that says, someone is assisting me in setting up my account. This is really important because as a municipal employee, I can't enter someone in for them. They can't send me their information and I can't go on the backend and add it. It's not allowed. But they can choose a family member or friend to help them put it in. And the great thing is if they do that, so say someone has their son or daughter, help them enter it in. Later on, they'll be asked to enter in their contact information as well. Rave will send, I think it's yearly updates, to remind people to update their information, their address, their phone number, all of those types of things. And the person assisting with helping setting up the account will get that reminder as well. So that's a nice add-in. Another thing that has caused a little bit of confusion, we've heard from the county, is at the bottom of the screen, there is a box that says group code optional. There is no group code. Skip the group code. Don't write anything in it and you'll be good to go. Over on the right there, it's just a screenshot of my personal OBX Alerts account. So you put in very typical information. Over on the right, it shows you the list that you're opted into. So everyone should go in and play with it and feel free to contact me in the office if you need assistance. While I can't enter you in, I can explain the pages to you. The last point of question that many people have had is that to sign up for OBX Alerts, you go to the town or county website. And once you enter that and start to sign up, you switch to a profile called Smart 911. It is the same, that is the system that runs Rave. So some people have had some questions about worrying that they had gone, accidentally gone to the wrong website. It is correct. Okay. So popping out of Rave, does anyone have questions very quickly about, about Rave? Okay. I've mentioned in this coming year, working on website cleanup, I know at a few town council meetings. So right now, I'm really hot and heavy into records retention, which is just a very exciting way to spend each and every day. We, some of our retention changes will occur as we update our town's retention policy. So there's some, a little bit of work to be done there with the new town manager as well. And we have been able to remove outdated information to improve our search function. I'm about halfway through removing information that I can remove right now without affecting our retention policy. And that has already vastly improved our search function on the website. And again, we've had some questions from the public about wayfinding improvements and an improved staff directory. And a lot of our staff agree with them as well after looking at other municipal websites. And a lot of our staff agree with them as well after looking at other municipal websites. So, I'm sorry. So these are things that we'll be kind of putting into play. Once, we want to get a lot of the backend cleaned up so that when we make the other changes, everything moves really smoothly. I did want to mention right now that I do not know if additional paid services will be required to meet our state retention policy for the website. We currently use a company that does archive all our social media and it's great. It's called Archive Social and it costs about $1,800 per year for the amount of items that we post right now. So that's 1,000 records per month. So we'll have to look at, if there is software, I'm working with our hosting, our website hoster, to find out what they might be able to offer. So I'll, I can present projected costs at a later date if, if we are required to have some sort of third party. The next thing we'll be doing, I didn't put the little duck in the middle, I should have. Or Drew, I could have put Drew's face in there. This is another continuation and look forward. I know we've had multiple discussions about our virtual meetings. You know, when we started doing this, we thought, oh, it'll just be for a couple more months. Oh, it'll just be for a couple more months. So to an extent, we've sort of hodgepodge some things together to make it all work. And while it works most days, we, if we want to continue doing this in the future, there are some upgrades we would need to make. So I'd really like to, I mean, every time we do a project or a meeting, I'm evaluating the live stream. And definitely after these two full days, this is the first time I've done a meeting like this, or well, half virtual, half in person. You know, be able to troubleshoot some items there. I, I'd also like to survey some of our stakeholder needs. I do know that we get questions occasionally, particularly from non-resident property owners about the best way for them to engage with items that are happening in town. And, you know, I don't know if people are interested in using Zoom for that or another platform, would they rather just watch it live on YouTube? So I, I'm going to investigate that a little bit before we look at what other further improvements might be needed so that we can really tailor that to what works best for our community. I threw out some numbers there, a possible investment in this coming fiscal year of $3,000 to $5,000 just to kind of get us up to speed. And had some discussion, Joe, I didn't hear if you mentioned it earlier, but perhaps in future years, looking at adding every three to five years a little bit of money in the CIP to just stay up to date with technology. A lot of the technology here hasn't changed significantly since it was built and much of it's out of date. So speaking of the town park, this, I guess, falls kind of under outreach. The way that our department is involved in a lot of these options and, and many other parts of the town are when it comes to the rain garden demonstration project that Joe was speaking of earlier, we are going to use that as an educational and informational tool. We already have Destination Dare signed up. So that's our local GovEd channel to do a piece on that. We've already, I've already looked into some very basic prices for interpretive signage. Again, that is very much an estimate, estimate, that $1,200. Adding information to our website with contacts for homeowners of local places, maybe North Carolina Extension Agency that would be able to assist with, with rain gardens, plus the, the small grant that's available from the Soil and Water Conservation District. And being able to engage the public about this project. And then in the park, you know, Joe really hit the nail on the head that we built the park and we, now we want to look for ways to continue building on, on the great things that we've done. So in terms of that, first, I have joined Leave No Trace. It costs $150. Most people have heard of Leave No Trace for keeping wild lands and wild places clean. So I thought I would sign on to this because they have a lot of educational material and much of it seems to align with things that we align with or align with our vision. So like this one, Trash Talk, Pack It In, Pack It Out, Better Together. I really love that one. We all share the outdoors. Everyone may have different ideas and expectations about what it means to be outside, but we must all be respectful of others we encounter. So I'm hoping to dig through that and start brainstorming some of the things that might be available in our park. And I'll talk about that a little bit under signage. We did do the moving of the trash cans, which I know, I know we've already talked about. Again, I'll probably use a little bit of that Leave No Trace collateral material to help have some signage made that'll go up this spring to really direct people to where all of the waste receptacles are. We obviously need a preliminary investigation of space needs because there are other items that are needed in the park. And then I'm very interested in looking at initial, additional amenities. So we do a really great way, way of showcasing our park when we have events and all sorts of things. But I also would really like to focus a little bit on just making our park a destination in and of itself that people would like to visit. So some of the things that I'm planning to look into, this is no time soon, just over the next few years, interpretive signage throughout the park. This can include things like nature, history, points of interest. We have quite a few cool things that are just right in and around our park, including the cemetery. Nature play, and I have a photo of that. We have quite a bit of space off to the side of our trails that might work for a really non-invasive activity for children or adults, adventurous adults, called nature play. There's usually grant funding available for things like this. And this is really not putting in a plastic or metal playground. It's using what you can. There's all sorts of things. You see little stepping stones with stumps and things like that. So that's another one of the things that I'd like to look into, just investigating a little what it would take, what our funding sources may be. And then really just enhancing some of the ways that we know that people use the park. And I, I had to bring up birding. So this is the McGilloway's warbler. I got it? So this is a west coast bird that was spotted primarily in DUC a little bit earlier this year in January. And the birders were out in droves looking for it. And it was really exciting. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity there for us to engage with some, a different set of people who, we know they come to enjoy our park and boardwalk anyway, but, you know, can we cater to some of the things that might make that enjoyment, you know, improve that enjoyment? So that was, that was our look ahead, just kind of for the, the parks and how our department is taking things that happen in our parks and trying to turn that around and engage the public with that. I did want to bring up marketing again, just for a second. Whoops. Yeah. Don't let me break, break the microphone. So one of the things about marketing is, in my opinion, we've usually had a fairly large budget for marketing. And this is print, radio, digital, and television, although we really rarely do anything on television. And quite frankly, I, I would like to reduce that a little bit, perhaps by 10%. And part of the reason for that is right now, we do a lot of print advertising, which is very expensive. I don't want to completely get rid of print advertising, but it's expensive and it, it's hard for us to measure. And we're finding in this digital world, two things. Sponsors like to see measurable things. They want to know that their name was advertised. They want to know how many times their name was advertised and their reach for that. And so in print ads, while we can say, you know, 1,000 of these magazines were printed, we can't necessarily give much more information than that. Using the, getting the digital data really helps us to show not only how many people were reached, but where those people are. And so for Jazz Festival in particular, two of our grants rely on marketing to out-of-area people. So we need to be marketing in Virginia and Pennsylvania and Ohio and the western part of North Carolina for those. And PNC and Outer Banks Visitors Bureau grants have to have that data. Very hard to get hard numbers when it's all in print. So just throwing that out there, and this is something we can certainly talk about later, but you may see a bit of a reduction in the advertising costs coming from my department because we will be focusing hopefully on digital, but also making better use of the digital assets that we already own. So that's a staff time investment rather than a direct cost investment from another company. Any questions there? We're jumping to a lot of topics because apparently Betsy and I wear about 17 different hats. So our segues are not great. Really what I just focused on, we just focused a lot on what our external kind of communications are from our department. New this year, I want to focus a little bit on internal communications. Hopefully this will open for me. But I have been working on Intranet staff site. It's still very draft right now. Once the retreat is over, all the department heads are going to look at this and see what they'd like to see added, what types of things might be helpful for their departments and/or their employees. And then we'll roll it out to all the town staff so they can say, what, what would we like to see on here? Do we need to be able to get this form in one place? So if you, just bear with me for one moment while I try and open it. Here we go. All right. Yeah. Pretty impressed I got that. So this is an Intranet site. So this means that the only people that can access the site are people who have Town of DUC email addresses. And right now, it's actually restricted less than that. It's only, it's restricted to all department heads right now, just as we try and figure out some of the things we'd like. So we have a few, a few features on here that just are supposed to be easy for people to find. Joe, hopefully you don't mind if I show your last newsletter. Huh? Yeah. So for instance, if, if we decide to have a weekly or monthly newsletter, whether that be written by me or by another director is great. Just a great way to share information. And then we're going to make sure that all of the policies, benefits, and all of those types of things that are available to town employees are going to be easily, easy to find. So some of these things aren't all linked up yet because I don't have all of the things. And they also have to be updated every time our health insurance plan rolls over. So, but we, we plan to have everything on here so that it's very easy to find. Everyone knows exactly what their benefits are, what their rights are, and all of the details of the personnel policy. I do not have the personnel policy on here right now because we're working on it, as you heard from the Maps Group. But we can put all sorts of things in here. You know, we can have policies for admin. Fire and police have a separate place they can use theirs. We can link to required trainings that we would like people to take. We can put forms like time sheets or leave requests and anything and everything, just really a clearinghouse to help employees be more informed, but also maybe to reduce a little bit of work on some of our admin staff. If employees can download a file, get it filled out and bring it, and then be ready to rock and roll. So I just wanted to, to throw that up. It's still working, all right. So, yeah, so that was communications. The communications and marketing part of our, of our department, of our department. And we want to head back into events a little bit because we think this is where, and how much time? Do I have till noon? Okay. This is, these are the parts where we expect there to be a lot of discussion and we really welcome a lot of discussion because we have some decisions to make that are a little bit time sensitive. And we would very much like to hear the council's thoughts today. So I'll start here with, I termed it Thoughts on COVID and Events. We, the meeting that we had with the event planners earlier this month, I wanted to bring up just a little more detail, kind of the things we talked about. So the towns that typically offer public events, the Outer Banks Tourism Bureau, that doesn't always offer their own events, but they do run this out, Soundside Advent Site, and Outer Banks Chamber, which runs multiple events, but most notably the seafood festival, which is normally held in the fall. And then we did have input from Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, both from Sheila and from one of her right hands, Kelly Nettenen. The basic consensus during this meeting was that currently throughout the county, at least for municipal municipalities, all in-person spring events have been canceled or rescheduled. So that's pretty much through May. There are a handful that have decided that they are not going to hard plan or even advertise in-person events until mid-July or August. Now, some of the reason for that is, as you guys heard yourselves from Sheila, is that with the current vaccine rate, that we may not get to some of those later phases, including the general public, until that mid to late summer timeline. Because of that, we don't know, right, how, how many people will want to gather. So that's a bit of an unknown. And based on the timeline of when staff and volunteers at events can be vaccinated, that may affect our timeline as well if, if everyone chooses to be vaccinated. We also may have less volunteers wanting to volunteer at in-person events, which is something we will also need to take into account. And one of the main thrusts here too is with all of us working together in the county, and we're going to continue to work together in the county, is we want to make sure that we're really modeling public health guidelines, right? So part of my job as a public information officer is to send out these public health guidelines and to support the county and the state in keeping everyone safe. So we definitely want to make sure that we are not unintentionally advertising events or setting a schedule that might undermine that message at all. So do you guys have questions, questions there? Okay. So Betsy will get up here now and our kind of segue here is the industry itself, just the events industry itself, has really started to make changes and suggestions for how to, how we move forward because there were a lot of events and artists last year that lost money and lost schedules. And force majeure sometimes only goes so far in a contract. So one of the things this downtime has given us is a time to watch a lot of webinars and to interact with a lot of other people across the state and the country who offer events. So I'm going to turn it over to Betsy so she can talk a little bit more about how one of the first things we did was to take a look at our contracts before we moved forward to make sure we were protected.
Hello again. So as Christian mentioned, the force majeure clause in a contract will only take you so far because it did not specifically state pandemics in it. We were able to use it last year, but because COVID is no longer, one of the general consensus of the webinars we've been listening to is that it is now not an unknown. So we had to put it specifically in the contracts. So based on guidance from multiple webinars and the town attorneys, we've gone back and forth and revised the contract. So force majeure clause now does include anything I could ever think of. Pandemics, COVID, floods, earthquakes. I mean, and we put everything in there we could. And we also included any governmental measures. So come June, if something happens or that we can have stuff and then suddenly we can't because the governor has decided to say it's gotten worse again, we, that is now part of the force majeure clause, which protects us from having to pay extra money that we didn't necessarily need to pay. And I'm going to reference these pictures right here. Chief Black will remember this night, I'm sure. You know exactly what night I'm talking about. So Remember Jones was this great band I was really excited to have. They were on kind of a tour, they were coming, going back up to New Jersey. The rain was out of the forecast. Everything was great. We had everything set up. 6:30 was Everything was great. We had everything set up. 6:30 was go time. What you see in that radar was taken, a screenshot at 6:42, because at 6:10, 6:05, Chief Black comes running up behind me on her nightly run. She's like, do you see what's behind me? That thing just came up out of nowhere. It was about a 30-minute hurricane. I think we all remember it. It was the craziest thing ever. We gave Remember Jones a show because they had never seen anything like it. They're from New Jersey. So they enjoyed it. I was like, but you see us all scrambling? Yeah. You see us all scrambling to cover up the equipment. So what we did with the, but I had to hand over that full check to them because they were all set up and ready to go, which was honestly kind of painful, but we had to do it. The new clause in the contract now states that if the inclement weather is known more than 24 hours in advance of the show, of the show date and time, the artist has the option to reschedule or take 50% of their original fee, less any deposits made. If it comes up out of nowhere, like it just did that time, the option is to reschedule or take 50% of the fee, which we would mail to them once we got the check cut. So that kind of protects everybody. They want to perform. We want them to perform, but it just gives a little more flexibility. We did reboot, we basically have rebooked all of the performers from last year. It made my job nice and easy because I didn't have to search for new people because we're all excited about them. But they are all under the understanding that it very well may not happen, that cancellations are there, but they wanted to go ahead and get it in the books. They started contacting me probably in September or October, asking what was going on next year. So we just kind of made the collective decision to go ahead and do that. Also, as Christian said, there are a lot of unknowns coming up. So I'm going to tell you what we actually do now. If we are able to do a full schedule, I wanted to just give a full, full-rounded picture of what that looks like in terms of budgeting, sponsorships, and, and everything. So what you're looking at here, I'm not going to tell you, give you all the numbers, but if we did a full schedule, which goes mid-June to the beginning of September, it's going to be around just under $54,000 to do all of those. Unfortunately, the mystery of the lost colony will not be coming this year. We have already spoken to them, and they are not planning to do any traveling shows, which is completely understandable. And I'd honestly rather know that now than in a couple of months when we're trying to fill some dates if we can. And I just separated this chart out so that if we end up not doing anything till July, especially, that's in the next fiscal year, it cuts by about, just about $10,000 to do all of the events. Event sponsorships, as we know, we really enjoy our businesses and partnering with them. For the summer events, we tend to try and keep it as local as possible to just the local businesses here. In 2019, we were able to introduce the hospitality sponsors, and they provided all the, all the dinners for the bands, which I do intend to move forward with this year. This is just a comparison of 2019 and 2020. Now, typically, the sponsorship is about 40% of what the total cost would be. And you can see in 2020, it was about 30%. One of the reasons for that is things were very uncertain going into 2020, and we, we honestly just stopped searching for the sponsorships because the businesses were closed, and we just didn't know what was going to happen. So we had the pledging at about 30%. Town Bank and Kellogg and the Cottage Shop had already paid us, and they allowed us to keep that money to carry over to when we'll be able to do them again. We are, every, one thing we were able to do also is step back and take a look at our sponsorship program. And I've done a lot of research, watched a lot of videos, read a lot of articles. And one thing we are going to get away from is the tiered sponsorship, and we're going to move more towards a customization. So we're going to approach the businesses, have about a 30-minute meeting with them or so. We've already met with a couple of our past sponsors, and they're really appreciative of this, to see what their goals are, what it is they look for in a sponsorship. And then we would come back to them with a plan of, okay, this is what we can do. How about this? And we'll customize it to their needs versus, okay, if you're the presenting sponsor, you get this, 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 and this. Oh, you don't want a table? Too bad. It's part of that. You know, we're going to customize it to what their needs are. And this is just another visual of what the full summer schedule will look like in terms of shows. The other one was in terms of weeks. So 14, 14, you know, hold, there's a lot going on. We're exhausted by the end of the summer, but it's a really good exhausted. I really enjoy being out there. And one of, I think you're probably going to chime in on me in a minute. Christian's going to tag in on this one real quick, actually.
So this is our first slide where we really are hoping to have a discussion with the council. So our first question is, were you okay with how we handled planning and canceling events last year? While we have a little bit more data this year, there's still going to be some uncertainty. And so last year, we did a monthly rolling evaluation and cancellations. So for instance, if things in July were going to be canceled, we announced that by June 1st. So we were always a month ahead. And then the second question for discussion is, do you prefer that based on what we're hearing from Dare County Human Services, that we pick a start date sometime later for possible events and, and do not advertise before a July time? And don't ask about 4th of July yet. We have slides on.
So the first question is basically the way you handled it this year, is it okay next year? You basically were giving 30 days in advance, which I, which I think, I mean, how much lead time do you need with events and with individuals and bands, et cetera? I mean, if it worked for you, then it should probably work for us. I mean.
Well, we're, I mean, in terms of our scheduling, 30 days out is, is fine by us because we typically have everything ready by May to move forward. You know, I mean, there may be some tweaks here and there, but it's 30 days is plenty of time for us. And I think it's kind of a good amount of time for the performers too, because a lot of the ones that come from out of town that fly in, they typically don't even get their flights until within a month because they travel all the time and they're used to doing that.
I think the other thing too, and that's the governor's orders, are generally coming out two or three weeks in advance. He's usually projecting out what he's going to say. So that 30-day kind of falls into that. So you kind of know, mass gatherings basically is going to be the big issue. I think it's going to take a lot longer to get the vaccinations done. Plus, you've got an influx of millions of people coming this summer. So I think there's going to be a lot of caution.
Yeah, I think so too. I mean, and who, I don't know how other states are handling their vaccinations, but who knows where we're going to be or they're going to be. Maybe they're rolling along right now, but in a month, that's going to stop. So a lot of unknowns, like we've been saying a lot.
So I guess one of the, the real places we're looking for direction from you is, do we want to, how do we want to tell people as they contact us about events? Do we want to say, you know, based on what we're seeing, we aren't going to be able to even hope to hold an in-person event until July? So we're going to have nothing on the schedule until then? Or do you want us to pick a, a later date for the possible start of our in-person events?
When do your in-person events start?
Mid-June.
July is fine with me.
So like mid-July, maybe we can get through the 4th of July thing we're going to pitch at you, and then?
See what happens.
Christian and Betsy, first of all, thank you for taking the lead on meeting with event coordinators from, you know, throughout the county. I think since everything is being driven by COVID, and if the general plan throughout the county is a delay of events, you know, up to a certain point, July, August, whatever it is that the general plan for the county is, I don't think that we should do something different than that. Because as with all things, different rules and different regulations and different strategies just creates confusion and griping and, and just problems everywhere. So if the lead event partners in Dare County have sort of adopted a stance, I don't think that we should buck that. And if you're paying attention to, you know, the projections coming out of CDC, you know, they're saying the vaccine availability might be July, but that doesn't necessarily mean shots in arms. So, you know, I'm thinking anything that might happen in the summer timeframe is going to be a gift, if it can even happen. And that fall is much more likely. And then just one more thing, and I'll let other people share their thoughts, is what I'm seeing in the running community and in the running world is that every single major road race in America has been postponed until the fall, including the DC Cherry Blossom Race, which is supposed to be the celebration of the blooming cherry blossoms in April, has been postponed till September, which I don't get it. I think I would have just canceled it. But I mean, everything, everything. So like every single weekend in America, starting in September, there is going to be a major race or a marathon, if it can even happen. No one's even entertaining the idea of doing anything in the spring and summer. So for what it's worth, that's what I'm seeing in my little sector of the world.
And that was, you know, this was the very first preliminary meeting that we had. And so those were kind of the best guesses that we threw out. Obviously, we're going to meet again in early March after the next executive order update, and we'll have, hopefully have more information then. So, you know, we're happy to bring this back to you at the March council meeting if we, if we feel like we have any new data or we could propose some, some start dates for you that would align with what we're hearing from the other towns.
I'd just like to chime in if I may, that there's, thank you very much for all the presentation we've seen so far. And as specifically as it relates to these events, when you look at these images that we're looking at on the screen, we're looking at a lot of people gathered in a close group. I don't, and I'm concerned about, about the work that's involved with you folks, setting all this up, only to give us a month to say, nope, this is canceled, this is canceled. It's sort of extra work in my mind that seems very unnecessary. I don't know how quickly it takes to, to pull together, say, let's just take the first one on the screen, yoga on the green. Let's say we decide that we'd like you to try to do it mid-July or August 1st even, whatever the date is that we decide for this, that particular event. You know, how quickly does that mobilize? And how hard is it for you to even get the word out? What, like you say, are those sponsors looking at? I mean, I do think people are hungry for this kind of stuff and, and certainly have come, grown accustomed to the fun things that Duck does offer. But in my mind, it doesn't make any sense to do a whole lot of planning only to have to rip, rip it apart and, and almost disappoint and, and create extra work for you guys. So my, my recommendation would be, yes, we don't even think about starting anything in person until, you know, much later in the summer. If then, maybe what Nancy's saying is true, we just say September. I mean, you hate to just say, hey, yeah, we've got nothing for you. I know you guys really pulled together a whole lot of great virtual things this year, and it just seems like it's extra work for you to set things up only to cancel them. I just don't see the sense in it. So I would be in favor of postponing until the beginning of the fall, really, to be honest, unless you can just pull something together quickly and say, hey, guess what? We're going to have a yoga person this coming Tuesday. You know, I don't know, maybe in August or something.
And Monica, to that, some of our local vendors or performers that we use, we could have a lot shorter timeframe. So if, if we did say we weren't starting events until whatever date we come up with, August 1st, September 1st, but there was a timeframe in there somewhere where we could have pop-ups because things were better, I think we would have a, you know, we couldn't have a full slate of events, but we could use some of our local performers and teachers and, to fill some of that if the conditions were right.
And that would be great because I would give the local folks that are artists an opportunity. I know we've been great about bringing in people from out of the area. But when you look at our audience, our, our local folks that love to come up and sit on the green, they, they're happy, just, they'd be happy to see a local artist. They haven't seen him in, in a long time unless it's been virtual. And, and our visitors, our visiting population, who would enjoy the artist, they're going to be happy with, with whoever. So I would be in favor of more of a pop-up idea. And just very, just being very cautious and also just not creating more work for you guys. You have enough to do than to create and then cancel. To me, I can't, I can't get behind that.
And I know that people last year were so appreciative of the sort of self-paced, independent opportunities, the, the chalk art, you know, the wildlife bingo, the sort of, the, the virtual 5K. I know that those kind of things are not without a lot of work. I mean, I think sometimes people don't realize how much work happens behind the scenes to actually make something like that possible. But I think for people who were looking for, you know, a little activity, I know, I know they were very well received. And, and so, to the extent that we can do them and not overwhelm staff with a lot of work, you know, those are, those are great and safe and interesting, unique to our area. So kudos for everything you did last year. And if it's the intention to try to do some of that this season, I'm all for it. But again, I appreciate that it is not without cost and without work.
Thank you for that. We do plan to continue, I wouldn't call those in, in place of events. There, there are things that I think we might continue in the future, even when we can have events. But like you said, the self-paced engagement, just to get kids out of the house on a red flag day and do a chalk art or something like that, are things that we would like to continue. And while they might not take the place of events, they could certainly easily be done in those months where we were not holding events.
I guess I would, I would suggest that you kind of do this on a 30-day rolling average. I mean, you're mid-February now. We're talking about July 1, mid-March, we're going to have a better feel. So maybe that moves to August 1. And I think as long as we're communicating, which we do a great job of, you know, people understand. And the other thing, I make the point, the people from the Northeast and Midwest, you know, they're going to be coming down here on vacation. But those states are so far behind in vaccinations that there's, you know, it's going to be a lot of risk for the people on, on the Outer Banks, even though we catch up and we get our mostly population vaccinated, there's going to be a lot of risk with all those people coming in. So I can see this kind of role. But I think if it's, it's not a major workload, I just think we do this kind of in a 30-day rolling average and, you know, rolling decision. And that'll give you a lot of lead time. If we're going to open back up in August, then we've got a lot of lead time. But, you know, you'll have a much better picture as we go through 30-day increments, I think, of the overall situation, not only in the Outer Banks, but in the nation.
Okay, so we will, as we continue to meet with the event coordinators, we can bring that back to you at council meetings, some proposed start advertising date sort of things. And then, you know, so if, if we end up choosing a date that's, say, August 1st to start everything, and then we figure out July 1st, we can't do that, then we have time to, yeah, okay. That's great. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I would just say I'm hoping 30 days is enough, Mayor. You know, I just, again, for the workload involved. But I don't, and I don't understand the contracts. I feel like, it sounds like you feel like we're protected a little bit more now with, with having to cancel. So yeah, I, I just, I worry a little bit about 30 days for the, for, just for the staff load of working to, to prepare. But I don't know, I don't exactly know how to regulate that, guys. You've got all the experience, the staff themselves. So you know what, what's involved. I just don't want you to be overworked. That's, that's my main concern. And create a lot of extra. Obviously, you can't advertise anything. And so your, your print and, and things you've mentioned that, you know, are going to be a lot more vague and just welcoming people to the town. And then if things pop up that we can advertise, we'll have some great, more immediate means to get out on social and things like that. But anyway, that's my concern, your workload.
There's a misinterpretation of what I mean by 30 days because I'm saying in mid, mid-March, we make the call for whether or not we're going to move that to August. And you're going to have a lot of months to plan if in fact we're going to do something in August.
You're saying, look at it in 30 more days and just see what, what, what it is. And, and right now, tell them, nothing before August 1st? Is that what you're?
No, I was saying right now, nothing before July 1st. And in 30 days, we're going to know more information. If we have to move that to August, and we move to August, we have to move it to September. I think the public is going to understand because it's going to be part of the national pandemic. So I'm just saying, sitting here in February, it's hard to make a real decision. But I think July 1 is realistic because I don't think we're going to be out of the woods by July. And 30 days, we're going to know a lot more information, probably going to move that to August. But I don't think we need to move it to September, October, all of a sudden, sitting in February, because we, you know, it's just too many months out. because we, you know, it's just too many months out.
Okay, we'll continue to update you at every council meeting with where we stand.
I was just gonna say that if they update us at every council meeting.
Yeah. Done. We will do that.
I don't know, I need to go through these next ones. That's okay, I can move faster. I can talk faster and I can talk, okay. So, I'm getting eyes from Joe, oh my gosh. So, one of my favorite quotes from my grandfather is to expect the worst, hope for the best, and you'll never be disappointed. And I think that's how we kind of are planning to go into this year. Planning for a lot of different things. And we're gonna be able to pivot like Ross from Friends tells you to do with that couch sometimes. Um, this is just the, we did the virtual events, I was showing some of the advertising we did for that. We had those scheduled. Um, in terms of a hybrid event, if we were to go with those, even if we started July or August, that would be live on location, we would stream it live. And then we would make it available afterwards online because we don't think there's gonna be, there are gonna be as many people in attendance as there typically would be for a comfort level, which is completely understandable. Um, Jonathan Burns is one of the flexible, is flexible comedy. And he was doing a live show from his house. So that was just an example of what that would look like online from him. He is from Pennsylvania, I believe, or the streaming online only. Now, the thing with the online, um, virtual events, as Nancy pointed out, is that there, it is more time. It is a lot more staff time, a lot more intensive because there is no end time to it. You go to a concert, concert's done, you clean up, you go home, you start the next week. But if you do a live show, people are still looking at it and still commenting on it into the night, weeks later, that kind of thing. So it, it's, there is more work to it. And a lot of people really don't realize that, as Nancy put it as well. Um, but it's doable. I'm just gonna go ahead and throw that out, it is doable. So, um, working with restrictions and this, I like this picture of the, yes, I'm sorry.
So one of the talking points we have, uh, for you guys is specifically about virtual events. Um, we did, we offered a lot of events virtually only this year because, A, that was a way to not lose money because we had made contracts with people. Um, and also a way to stay engaged. And again, we thought it might be for just a few months at a time, but it ended up being the whole summer. But we, we did want to ask the council in general, how you feel about virtual event offerings? And this is separate from what Nancy mentioned about us doing, you know, fun scavenger hunts and things like that. These are paying performers to perform virtually only for us. Um, so our question to this is to, you know, our vision for, ha, as I understand it, for having these events in our park is to create a sense of community. And I don't, I just would love to get a feel and a direction from council about, uh, do we want to invest in virtual-only events that, that, um, and if we do, do we want to prioritize a budget and look for lower cost or local options for virtual events?
We can ponder that for a second.
Yes.
I'll answer this second.
You don't have to answer right now, we can bring this back again in March, but.
I don't see the, I don't see the, where that, what that gets us. I mean, yes, Duck is known for its events, but virtual events, um, personally, my quick re-answer is, I don't see the value.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Monica, that, you know, people gotta, gotta, you know, if you have a concert at 6:30, how many people are gonna tune in at 6:30? They might come up here and sit in the park and have a drink, but they're gonna probably go to the beach and have a drink, otherwise it's 6:30. If there's no concert up here. So no, the, the yoga and fitness on the green, maybe those make sense. And you do get an after-watch on that, but.
Okay.
I'd have to think about it a little bit more. I, I don't know if I feel like I have a real good grasp of it. And, um, I feel like I need to educate myself a little bit more about, um.
And we could get you some budgetary numbers for that?
That'd be great.
So the, the items that we do, the scavenger hunts and things like that, that we are creating in-house, don't really have a budget. Um, but outside performers, even though they're performing virg- virtually, still do have a fee.
Mm-hmm. Of course, and I think, well, thank goodness, because they're hurting.
Um, and so I might just, so as we move, if you guys are okay with us moving along.
Quickly.
Since we have taken too much time. Before Betsy dives into this, I just wanted to bring up the talking point about this. It might move us along a little faster. Betsy's done an incredible amount of work looking into, um, how we can comply with, uh, executive orders and guidelines and potentially using our amphitheater for some sort of event. Um, it'd be the main place that would be easiest to be used because we can, you know, we, we can block in and out. But on that topic, we want to ask you, again, is this something you see for our community? If we can only have 100 people in there and we need an unknown but highly increased, um, amount of staff time to clean, to, to enforce, to, um, uh, you know, to do all of those things, potential extra costs for providing extra cleaning of bathrooms? Is this, is this something that the council is interested in as well?
Well, you're looking at seating 350 each show possibly, and cutting it down to 100, 125 per show. I don't think it's doing anything for the community, it's gonna be a war to get in when they've been here before and thinking, hey, it's a pre-show, everybody can get in. Yeah.
I agree.
Extra volunteers you're gonna have to have. How many of them are gonna wanna work in a condition like that?
Yeah.
I would say it wouldn't be worth it. Now, you've got 22, 25,000 people in town, you have an event for 100 people.
Right.
Who's gonna mark off where they sit? And then the whole family wants us together and then they're too close. I don't, I don't even think it'd be worth it.
And then we have to call Chief Ackerman, and then we have to.
We're gonna call the police, and that's a thing.
And the other thing is, if we're still in the pandemic, people are not gonna have those expectations anyhow.
That's what I'm.
They're gonna come down here and hang in their houses and.
Right. They're not looking to have social interaction, I think, most of them. I mean, a walk in the park, uh, is gonna be the, a kind of recreation that, that they're gonna be expecting if we're still in this, uh, you know, they've, they've come down here to kind of get away from people. I, you know, I don't know.
And we can certainly switch to providing some informal outdoor things too. You know, if we see someone crabbing, we could come down there and talk to them about crabs. Or, you know, we could, we can adapt to how people are using the park if we're not having events. Um, okay, well, that answers that one.
That goes to that one, yep.
Just so you guys know, there's a plan.
Your turn, you're up.
Okay. Very quickly, I did just wanna give you a quick update on the Jazz Festival. This slide is recycled from last year because most likely we would, uh, have all of the same artists back. We plan to apply the same theme and apply for a green travel certification from, uh, NCDQ. The idea last year was that last year was the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. So we really wanted to have this, uh, event with jazz artists from around the world. And many of them are committed to sustainability and, uh, either have music or, um, you, you know, had some way that they were gonna bring that to the program. Most of them are still all on board. We don't totally have that worked out yet. But part of that reason is because I wanted to talk to you about budget. Uh, we were able to roll over the PNC support, which was $17,500. The Outer Banks Visitors Bureau grant rolled over $6,000. The Arts Council grant that we typically get somewhere between $6,000 and $8,000 is not available for our types of performances this year. Uh, quite rightly so, they are focusing their grant funds on, um, I shouldn't say starving artists, but, but yes, shuttered venues, um, and things like that. So it's, it's quite understandable. Our current proposed budget for the Duck Jazz Festival is $115,000 roughly. Um, not much different than past years. In 2018, we were 47% sponsored, in 2019, we were 50% sponsored. And, um, additionally, there were some other revenue that came in from selling merchandise too, but a pretty small amount. So the town contribution, you can see there, about $46,500, $48,500. Um, with the loss of the Arts Council grant and, uh, continued expected decline in sponsorships, although we will be working very hard at that. My best estimate for the town portion this year, completely just my gut feeling right now, would be closer to about $65,000.
About 35?
65.
65.
Yes. Um, so we can reduce that amount by, by changing the festival itself a little bit. Uh, we could try and change out some of the artists. Uh, we could, um, call an audible and use some more local talent. Uh, we have some options there. And I don't, I don't really need a decision from you today, but I, I just, if you're interested in, in me looking at ways to reduce that cost, I'm happy to do it. But it is something I would need to know soon as I work to book these artists.
I mean, my own take, as you're looking at $17,000 increase, I mean, I don't, we might get more sponsorships or something like that. I mean, $17,000, I don't think it's gonna break the town if we can have the Jazz Festival.
Okay.
And maybe we sell more merchandise, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, I, to me, the difference is only 17,000. And based upon some of the other numbers we're talking about, I don't think that's gonna break the town.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, and then we're also saving on summer, so.
Yeah.
What, um, what's your timetable on that, Christian, for your decision on, on, uh, on making any changes? I, I don't disagree with the mayor, I just wanted to remind myself of when are we making this decision?
Um, I, I would really, uh, like to start advertising tentatively for the Jazz Festival in April, which is Jazz Appreciation Month. Of course, um, wording will be a little bit vague. We're, you know, basically the entire Outer Banks is hoping we can hold fall events. Um, so, you know, by, by the end.
By next month, by, by the March meeting or something like that, you'd like to get the, uh, the authorization? I, I don't disagree that, um, some, you know, our Jazz Festival is, is a, is a, is something that I would love to be able to return to, there's no question. Um, and the 17,000 is, is not gonna be a big difference. And you may get, like you said, more people willing to sponsor.
I think it will depend on how the summer goes, probably.
I, I will say housing is gonna be tough, you know, for the, the, um, that's gonna be one of your challenges, is, is getting, uh, getting these folks in a place to stay.
Yep.
Because the demand is gonna be really strong all the way through the year.
Yep.
Yeah, once again, we're talking 60 days out, so we'll have a lot more information come mid-April with respect to where we're going, so.
Yeah. Um, so I would just like to mention with that, that with everyone else in the county pushing all of their events to the fall as well, uh, we all fully realize that every weekend, probably September through October, is gonna be packed. Um, another great reason for us to continue these event coordinator meetings throughout the season, um, so that we can amongst ourselves discuss potential overlaps, how to cross-promote each other, you know? You know, if the seafood festival is the same weekend as the Jazz Festival, maybe we cross-advertise and some people come to half a day for us. And, you know, I, I think we can work around that, but that has been thought about. Okay, thank you. Um, very quickly, uh, we wanted to get to 4th of July. And that says 5th on here, because 4th of July is a Sunday, so we'd be celebrating on the 5th. We have racked our brains and cannot figure out any way that it is possible to have our typical 4th of July event this year. So we didn't want to just come up here and say, um, we should, we should cancel it. So we have put together, uh, a little bit of a proposal for a reverse 4th of July parade. This still may not meet public health guidelines, but, um, we think it might be easier to incorporate them, uh, in general. So this is a, a photo from Iowa that, that this past year did a, a reverse 4th of July parade. And a typical one has floats lined up along the sides and the cars go through. Um, in Duck, we would obviously be encouraging walking and bicycling. So we would need to work with businesses to secure space for floats and possibly encourage store front decorations. The parade itself would be spread out through time and space, hopefully presenting, preventing a crush of people. I call it parade at your own pace, which is what I would always love to do. Um, we could still include items like judges and popular votes. Um, we've also looked at, how do we spread out that entire celebration throughout town where we're not making, um, a, a gathering space in too many spots? So possibly looking at spreading live music throughout town. And, uh, we would also take into consideration routing. Um, so using the sideline, sidewalks, bike lanes, and the boardwalk to move people around and creating a series of maps, um, too, that would allow us to see, you know, if you're coming from the north, you know, it's best to go this way and then cross here and then go down here and then come back via the boardwalk to try and keep people a bit separate. Um, obviously, we've talked to public safety about some of these options. Um, we would make parking places for those needing vehicles. And, um, it'd be a great way to get people moving around the entire commercial district and would highlight the village and businesses. So having said all that, there, um, you know, there's about a million, oops, sorry, guys. There's about a million things to consider when it comes to this. So, um, I guess right now, is this something that you would even like for us to look into?
Could I, could I just jump in real quick? I'm sorry if I'm, I'm just, uh, I love the idea of the, um, businesses, um, kind of doing a storefront decoration and getting, you know, getting into the idea of, um, of, uh, you know, patriotism and, and all the, all that goes along with the 4th of July. My mind would be that this wouldn't, this, if you were going to go to the effort of this, two things. I'd just say that, uh, the Duck Merchants Association, maybe we could poll them to see the interest in getting the merchants involved. But I would also encourage it to be sort of a week-long, you know, event or longer because there's a lot that goes into a storefront, creating a, creating some kind of display. Um, and that maybe it is just more of a decoration type of a thing and not, um, a day. You know, I, I think if you're gonna, if, if you wanna bring people in, it could be, it could be the month. You know, I mean, if your folks are decorated, um, it, it doesn't seem, I don't think it should be concentrated, uh, in, in a, in a particular timeframe. If you're, if, if people were gonna go to this effort, because I think you're gonna get that flux of folks and, and you don't wanna, uh, just, I don't think it should be concentrated. Those are my quick initial things. I love the idea of, of getting folks involved in decorating and maybe having some kind of a fun, um, you know, contest or voting or something like that. But, um, not, not just for one day or, uh, maybe not even just a week. That's, there's a lot that goes into something like this.
I agree with Monica. I think we do one day, it's pandemonium. I mean, we know what happens with the 4th of July parade and the crowds and trying to get people going through town. And, uh, I mean, and maybe some longer-term type thing with some patriotism behind it and, you know, fly your flags and decorate your stores and that type of thing. But I think anything we do in the short term is, is, and you're talking, once again, beginning of July. I, I just think we're asking for a lot of what we don't need.
Okay.
Maybe be a month of July parade.
So then we may need to lean more towards just storefronts and not having float-type things to take up parking. But let us, um, think about this a little bit and come back to you in, uh, in the March or the April council meeting with some more flesh, fleshed out ideas. If, okay?
That'd be great.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you just wanna yell thank you to the volunteers.
Basically, that graphic says that we love our volunteers, thank you to everyone that volunteers. All right, I'm done. No, we, um, so, even though we didn't have a, sorry. Even though we didn't have events last year, there were over 625 hours worked between duck sweep, the beach planting, and, um, the safety, um, ambassadors program. Um, we've already had five new volunteers this year and 100 hours worked with beach planting alone, and that's just since January 1st. Um, we did do some outreach to our volunteers throughout this year. I would text, phone calls, emails, cards. If I knew somebody in particular was going through something, they would get a card from the town, from me and the town. Um, everyone in here, I think, was a volunteer. And so they got emails from me throughout the year, keeping them up to date and all that good stuff. Um, we are moving forward, we're talking about, uh, recognition for all volunteers all at once and possibly aligning that with the May birthday. Kind of building on what Nancy's talked about in the past, doing a big kind of party outside. Obviously not this year, but possibly doing something in the fall to counteract that, but then align it with the birth, with, um, the town birthday. And there's another good segue our department has right now, because speaking of birthdays.
We have too many hats, we can't, we can't have any good segues. This is our last slide, I promise. Just wanted to bring this up. A, to make everyone aware that, uh, Betsy and I do know that the 20th anniversary of the town is next year. We will come to you at some point with some planning and budget proposals. We are not there yet, um, but just wanted to throw this out here for you to think about for a little while. If you ever wanted to do a trial of fireworks, that might be a good. that might be a good time to do it because I know it's been discussed on doing it for 4th of July before, but the companies will not work with you if your first time is 4th of July. If we ever wanted to try fireworks, that would allow us to do them at other times if we wanted, this might be a possible time to do it. So at your convenience, not right now. If it's something you'd like us to research, we just wanted to know, because it had been mentioned before. And that, that's all, sorry that we went over.
Don't be sorry. No sorries. Thank you.
That's all right. And we all have, you know, further discussion on a lot of those issues. Thank you for bringing them up, though. I mean, it's timely and we do have some decisions to make moving forward.
Yeah, it was a lot of things, yes. But we'll also, like I said, we'll be slowly bringing them back up as we come to council meetings, but kind of just wanted to have you familiar with some of these larger ideas.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry, a quick question. Just, you don't have to answer it right now, but when you were talking about those needs for keeping up with your technology year over year, keeping it sort of in the CIP or every other year, how, just off, you can answer me offline, but government access channel and those grants that we get, which is down to 5,000 a year, I know. But is that appropriate to help you with the, with the technology needs?
With some of them. So if I can write a grant that shows that what we're using leaves the room and can be viewed on the GovEd channel, then it's more likely for us to get funding for it. But doing things like replacing the monitors in the rooms cannot be covered by that. So, yes, so we will use as much LPDI money as we can to cover eligible items.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to break for lunch.